And welcome. Our meeting now is reported. Please join me in this recording. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands our nation are indivisible, infinite, just. And all of the citizens, we ask for what's regarding those who are first survivors, people who have suffered under the and people who have suffered through the pandemic. We think of our limited day on forces who are there for and we think of our police force and firefighters who keep us safe within our community. Please be seated. Please make a good morning. I would like to provide for both of you of how we might proceed tonight. The first part of our meeting is the annual, it will be the annual organizational meeting. The first thing we will do this evening is that we will have the officials of both of us be sworn into their, uh, what is it, into their office. I is made in the ministry of office to be elected trustees Robert A. Bolroth, John H. Derry, Colleen E. Foley, and Lois M. Minuto. We will also make several appointments, which we are required to complete on the state floor or our village code. And then we will proceed back to our uniform routine for our regular visits. At this time, I would like to open up our annual organizational meeting. And I would first like to ask our village clerk, Karen Boltman, to report on the results of September 15 election, village election.
Thank you, Mayor. The results were Robert A. Bolroth trustee for two years, 191 votes. Trustee John Delaney trustee for two years, 202 votes. Colleen E. Foley trustee for two years, 201 votes. And Lois M. Minuto trustee for two years, 495 votes. There were total of 317 voters, including 86 absentee ballots. Congratulations, trustees.
Thank you very much. Now, I will begin by administering the official office to the newly elected trustees. Will they all come forward to the front of my desk? All right. I, stakeholder, do solemn wish favor that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge my duties of official of the office of trustee of the incorporated village of Garden City in the essence of Canton, New York, according to best of my ability. By the powers vested in me as village mayor, the village of Garden City, I declare you to be appointed. Congratulations. I'd like to offer my congratulations to all the recently elected trustees, Robert Bolroth, John Delaney, Colleen Foley, and Lois Minuto. And I would also like to offer my congratulations to all the recently, uh, to our continuing trustees, Brian Dorni, Mark Hyer, and Stephen Makrinos, and then the new state mayor. At this time, I look forward to continuing our work together on this board. We will continue with the organizational agenda. We will be making a series of appointments and asking for the board for various motions. I now make a formal meeting appointment as mayor. Deputy Mayor, Robert A. Bolroth. Environmental Advisory Board Chair President, Stephen S. Makrinos. The Library, Colin E. Foley. Public Works, Mark A. Hyer. The Zombi Change Reboot Committee, Louis Smithville is the chair. John Delaney, H. Bradford Gustafson, Cosmo Beniziani, and John Romanella. I'd like to appoint, uh, an advisory committee and a civic purification committee. Patricia Styler, Chair. Maureen Lyons, Chica Member. Althea Robinson, Kathleen Wohl. Now, I will return to appointments by the mayor for people who are subject to the board of trustee approval. I will now read the following appointments and ask for a motion to approve at the end. The Board of Police Commissioners, Mark A. Hyer. Also Ralph Swazi and Kenneth Jackson. The Traffic Commission, Louis M. Minuto is the chair. John Delaney, Stephen Makrinos, Colleen Foley are supporting. Kenneth O. Jackson and Joseph D. Francisco are always members. The Finance and Boarding Committee, Robert Bolroth, Chair. John Delaney, Colleen Foley. The Committee to Fill Vacancies on Boards and Commissions, Teresa Truvay is the chair, and she is joined by Mark Hyer. The Legal Committee, Brian Dorni and John Delaney. Public Information Committee, and that includes village press releases and statements. Robert Bolroth, Colleen Foley, and Stephen Makrinos is the chair. Designation Official Newspapers, The Garden City News, Garden City Life. The Planning Commission, H. Bradford Gustafson, Scott Brandewig, Gregory Lee Senkin is the alternate member. And their terms will expire in April 2023. The Environmental Advisory Board, Lawrence Quinn, Evelyn Tisana, terms to expire April 24. Architectural Design Review Board, Donald Hickey, Rosario Pallanti. And then we also designate Donald Hickey Jr. as Chair President. Terms to expire April 2023. Board of Commissioners of Cultural and Recreation Affairs, Timothy Staple Firm, Christina Russo, terms to expire April of 24. Can I ask for a motion to approve the foregoing? Deputy Mayor Bolroth. And second, um, Mr. Trustee Makrinos. All in favor? That motion carrying eight zero. Now we will move on to appointments by board of trustees. Long Island Railroad Third Track Committee, the chair is Brian Dorni, joined by Stephen Makrinos and Joseph D. Francisco. Board of Ethics, Richard B. Silver is the chair. Alan Mathers and Valerie Rothschild. Board of Appeals, James Van Joy. Term to expire April of 2025. Designation of designation designation of banking depositories, J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, TD Bank, Capital One, and People's United Bank. And then request a motion to approve foregoing, trustee Hyer. And a second, Deputy Mayor Bolroth. And all of those in favor? And that motion carrying eight zero. At this time, we will move along with the regular agenda. And we will move to comments by the four candidates, the village administrator. Uh, so we begin then with Commissioner Jackson, please.
Hi, Mayor. I'd like to note finance number one, property as a reference to police. That's regarding, um, we've, uh, we've made several outstanding arrests limiting the volume of robbery drugs or serious offenses. And we were able to obtain money from Nassau County. What's regarding saying? And we utilized this money to invest by picking freight machines, scanners, basic equipment, weapon train, and also, uh, software. We're looking forward to now to buy some weapons, other, uh, weapon train that we can use. So, uh, this is money that we have coming over the years and we're trying to get the resources over to this year. And just on another note, um, I'd just like to say school has opened. Um, it's been challenging with, uh, the cooperation between schools and police. And, uh, they've done well. Uh, every one of your schools, I think that's conveyed some more challenges this year because a lot of stuff we've been playing in place in the last few years. Uh, we have to double it now because of, uh, you know, COVID. Everybody's doing well. Uh, also in addition, we'll be step up controls beginning of the year. And, uh, we're asking people, please be careful you're driving. And not just in school zones, but, uh, not school zones for schools, but also for your bus stops where your children walk into school. Please take care. And, uh, we wrote all the security tickets the first four days to school. We won't go through all the numbers, but just the one ones. The school's speed zone is 35. The rental's speed zone is 37. The past school was a score. We will sell all our current tickets, but please, uh, take care.
Thank you, Commissioner. And now Chief Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item on my mind. It's agreement with Nassau County Fire Service. Nassau County Fire Service Mutual plan. New York State requires all counties in New York State to have a mutual plan. Nassau County has received 700,000 hard awards in this county without this plan. It's 167 pages, not 15, provided you, but if you're looking for, uh, approval on this side of the line.
Thank you very much. I will move over. Hey, John Delaney.
Mayor, just like the chief said, um, this says the signed agreement is a result of a tragedy in 2014. New York State.
Yeah, took your microphone on, John.
All right, now? You hear me now?
Yeah.
This, uh, what the chief was talking about is so, uh, New York State requiring, uh, a mutual aid agreement with all departments. It goes out of the tragedy of the firefighter back in 2014. The chief and I, one of the chiefs, Chief Moyer, attended a meeting where this was explained in detail. So everybody who stands up until this time have had mutual aid, it's worked very well. This kind of formalizes and it's an agreement. So we ask that trustee support for authorizing us to enter into this agreement.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chief Valiela.
Hey, can I say something? The chief has spoken, I just want to say, uh, it's time for this agreement, but, uh, what, 10 days ago, there was a significant fire in the village. The volunteer fire department did a fantastic job. They had proved their full three, four trucks, crews, water out of the house in about seven, eight minutes. Uh, we were very lucky. People lived there, thank God, when we were in here. Of course, they'll be looking for their homes to burn. We're simply glad that, uh, we were lucky and the fire department had a great response. Part of this agreement, uh, is also reflecting on what happened that night. We had crews from other villages come as well.
15 to 1, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chief Valiela.
Evening, Mayor, trustees. Um, I don't have anything on the agenda at the time, but I just wanted to mention that we are still seeing increasing the applications. Uh, into COVID, um, everything is running smooth and the building department is, um, picking up. Um, I also wanted to mention that the people that did request the original property folders, we are, we do have a lot of not being picked up. So if you did request them, please pick them up. Because we don't have storage, the whole of it in our garages. Uh, and that's it, Mayor. Thank you. Any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chief Francisco.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple items on the agenda this evening. Item number 11 is a change order for the Nassau Boulevard railroad parking lot renovation. Uh, during the course of the work there, we discovered a, uh, a broken layer of concrete below the subways of the original parking lot that needed to be removed. And below that, we found a significant amount of clay that also needed to be removed in order to, to have a, uh, a more stable base for the new parking lot. Uh, so that required the removal of the clay plus additional material to fill in with clay removed. Uh, we also repaired the sidewalk between, uh, the parking lot and the station, which is actually railroad, uh, own sidewalk. We consulted with the railroad. We advised them that the sidewalk was not compliant and they, they, uh, authorized us to do the repairs on their behalf. And they will reverse, reverse us for the cost of that. Uh, the station also has a flag pole, which was part of the original project. We decided to secure the flag pole by redoing the concrete around the pole and adding, uh, better lighting for the flag that's there. And the last part of this change order is the, the new streetlights are going into the lot. Uh, we've, we are going to add outlets for all those poles. Uh, so down the road, if decorations want to be hung on light posts in that parking lot, it'll be powerful and to the end. So that's what encompasses this change order. The project, by the way, is, is progressing beautifully. Uh, they'll be, uh, actually starting a reinstallation of the paper stones next week. So, uh, the project is, is moving on nicely. Um, item number 10, a wood bid. Uh, we had to bid out for our recycling services. Uh, we only received one bid and we are going to reject that only one bidder due to a, uh, non-compliant bid. Uh, Mayor decided to go forward.
Mr. D. Francisco, I just wanted to ask you, um, you and I have exchanged emails on this topic that's near and dear to my heart. I know that the ballots, it was a delay in being able to get them. We finally have received them, I believe. So do we have an idea of what we put on 7th Street to further protect our residents who have been eating outside?
In Glazierlau, uh, is on my, uh, the mark out during the outbreak, was also a lead on a day. I got this one. I was on the, uh, south of the interstate.
All right, this is cool.
Mayor, Mayor, could I make a comment? I want to grab the Joe D. Francisco to look at all the project sites. And I've got to tell you, it was really quite exciting to see. They're doing a fantastic job of that. So Joe, Tom, you're crew. You guys are doing a great job over there. Uh, as far as the pay of pay system for water, I went to the wells, it's quite exciting to see. And we want to kind of set up a meeting if you want to go over there so that you can see what is actually happening. The, the work, I mean, it all sorts of a little bit reactive. I mean, it's, no, it's, it's part of the, uh, the, uh, the system to clean the water. But it's, it really is worth saying that you can get an idea of what the projects are, the wells are a little bit. So I'd like to do that if I'm, if I'm going to take a look. But guys, Nike, get, get out.
Hey Joe, can you give us a look down the water tower? Yes, the, uh, the tower, I'm final statement now. They're, uh, they've been painting the tower currently. They're sandblasting the interior of the tower. They started, uh, set up this week. Uh, and while they're sandblasting the inside of the tower, they're going to be setting up scaffolding on the outside of the tower in order to sandblast the outside, uh, prime it, and then, uh, painting it again. When do we think it should be online? Uh, we're hoping to have it online sometime this winter, sometime towards, you know, end of the fall. Uh, I mean, as long as the weather holds, the painting, we should have any issue with the painting. It's a good, it's good painting weather right now. So, um, once the painting is done, and of course, it's still pending, have to hold department approval. Uh, but, uh, I'm hoping to have it online sometime by the end of this year. Possibly next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, just one last question, colors, maybe?
I'm sorry?
What color does it be, Ethan?
Uh, the board decided, I, it was a light blue. I don't have the exact name at the last meeting.
All right. Now we move on to this room.
Good evening, Mayor. Tonight, only two week before, an update on the status of where we ended the fiscal year 1920 and where we are in the first quarter of the new fiscal year. Um, so just to give a recap, I reviewed revenues in prior board meeting for 1920. The village, um, received $16.8 million of revenues for the fiscal year. Um, our budget of about $65 million. As we previously discussed, about $4.1 million of this is expected to be, is deferred and is expected to be received in the next fiscal year. Um, these are mostly due to two large projects that will be reimbursed. And, um, also, uh, in the building department, there's some permanent needs for a 555 store and avenue project that is, uh, deferred till, uh, the 2021 fiscal year. The village also saw, saw that, um, saw some losses due to COVID of about $700,000 in the 1920 fiscal year. So in the last quarter of the year, um, there were, you know, cancellation of recreation programs, cancellation of rental facilities and fields, um, as well as, um, less court fees, less tickets that were issued, um, also less cul-de-sac services. Um, so sidewalk, uh, work that was scheduled to be done was deferred. And so those reimbursements did not come in, as well as, uh, there was less, uh, commercial sanitation that was picked up during this period of time. Um, on the flip side, the village also saw about $600,000 of favorable variance due to, uh, unanticipated revenues. Some of these were from forfeiture deposits, premium on securities when they went out to bond, as well as, um, additional state aid that was received that was not anticipated. In the enterprise funds, um, we see the pool revenues were came in slightly below budget, about $18,000. These are the revenues that were received in the prior years, which is our 20, somewhere of 2019 revenues. The tennis fund, um, due to the closure of the, the tennis bubble for the last three months of the fiscal year, um, saw, uh, loss of revenues of about $1,400,000. Since that's the, you know, where the revenues for the tennis bubble falls from is from, 100% from the facility itself and the programs, um, that are, that occur there, you know, that the tennis fund took a big hit on the revenue side.
Mr. Russo, do you have a question? If you go and say the public works, the $3 million. Does that mainly set commercial, uh, commercial garbage pick up?
The $3 million, uh, no, so that's mainly due to the two, uh, capital projects that were deferred. They were anticipated to start in the 1920 fiscal year, but were deferred. One of the projects is the project that's ongoing now, Nassau Boulevard train station project. And the second project is the business district paving. Okay? And then some of the losses there also is the commercial sanitation, but that was about $48,000. You're up. The Water Enterprise Fund, uh, saw, was, uh, saw a decrease in the budget of about $483,000. That's mostly due to lower consumption year over year of about 3%, slightly offset by, uh, the increase in the water rate. On the expenditure side, the, the general fund has $60.6 million of expenditures. Um, and again, compared to the revenues received of 60.8, you know, the, the village received revenues that exceeded the expenditures for the year. The planned expenditures were 67 million. So the village saw a lot of decreases in revenues. Some of these were due to COVID. The vast majority of these, uh, savings were from open positions that were unfilled, retirements that were not anticipated, positions were subsequently filled immediately. We had less overtime, less part-time help, um, through programs, didn't need to hire more time or so much. Um, so, and subsequent benefits and taxes related to those positions. So that amounted to about $2.3 million of savings. The village also had many other different expenditures. Some of it related to COVID. Close, yeah, closed the closure of the facilities. There were, you know, less programs and, um, activities that were occurring. So the village incurred less expenses, less contractual services, less materials and supplies. Um, so that amounted to about $800,000. There were less legal fees, about $400,000, less judgments and claims of about $2 million. Under the enterprise funds, um, the, they also saw overall reductional expenses due to COVID. Um, and the water fund also had older positions. So they had a lot of favorable variance there as well. Um, of all the funds, the tennis fund is the only one where the revenues did not exceed the expenditures. The next slide shows, um, the results of overtime for the village for the 1920 fiscal year. For the general fund, the village For the general fund, the village incurred $1.3 million of overtime, which was a decrease from the prior year of about $1.4 million. Decrease, again, are mostly due to COVID, closure of the village facilities, cancellation of programs, cancellation of special events, parades, charity runs, you know, that were scheduled for the spring. So that caused some reduction in overtime for the village. For the first quarter of the 1920 fiscal year, so for the months of June, July, and August, in the building department, they have received about $1.9 million of permit fees that were not budgeted. This is for the building that was formerly occupied by Sears. So those unbudgeted revenues will help offset some of the losses due to COVID for the rest of, for the village. As we continue to see losses in the police and court area due to decreased number of tickets that are issued, as well as in the recreation department for the summer programs that were canceled. So we're seeing about combined in those two areas, about a $400,000 loss for the first quarter of the year. Under the enterprise funds, so these revenues for the pool are for the current summer, the, this past summer. The enterprise, the pool fund, actually received $300,000, $354,000 of pool revenues. The 654 year-to-date number includes $300,000 of budgeted transfer from the general fund. So off of the budget, the anticipated budget for the pool was $1.3, $1.3 million. So only $354,000 was received. So the pool is seeing close to $1 million loss in revenues this year. The tennis fund continued to have closure until it opened sometime in the week of July 12. They are anticipating that programs will start up again next week. So they're anticipating that the rest of the year will most likely ramp up in revenues. But for the first quarter of the year, there's approximately a $65,000 loss of revenues. The water fund continues to be on target to their budget. Looking at the expenditures for the first quarter of the year, we've included, the village continues to incur expenses related to COVID, you know, some cleaning, PPEs, materials, as well as some overtime for the outdoor dining events. The total estimated cost due to COVID, since the pandemic started, are about $350,000. And that continues through October 4th, which is the deadline for this emergency, for FEMA related costs. So the village is continuing to work with FEMA as well as with Nassau County to seek reimbursements through the CARES Act. So we're, you know, gathering documentation to provide that information to them. The village also incurred unexpected costs due to tropical storm Isaias, and that's estimated to be about $1.4 million. Between the tree removals, the stump riding removal, miscellaneous debris removal, curbs and sidewalks that were damaged, so the repairs for that, as well as for overtime, those costs are pretty significant. We are, this tropical storm was declared emergency, so we are working with FEMA again to provide documentation for reimbursements.
Mr. Lo, the COVID reimbursement, what percentage do you expect them to be reimbursed?
So we initially submitted, began submitting reimbursements through FEMA directly. We submitted about $40,000 to them, and they only reimbursed 75% of the expenditures. Subsequent to that, we reached out to Nassau County under the CARES Act. They are reimbursing, or they're anticipating to reimburse the village 100% for those expenses. So we're, you know, just going through Nassau County on that. So for the tropical storm, that would be again FEMA, so that would be, you know, 75% reimbursement on those expenses. So, you know, when we get reimbursed on these expenses, it's unknown at the time, you know, it's a normal process. They require a lot of documentation, they spend a few months reviewing it, you know, before they submit reimbursements. So we're hoping to get reimbursements before the end of this fiscal year. In the meantime, in order to cover some of these expenditures, we've been looking at transferring funding from open positions that have not been filled, part-time help budgets that, you know, for part-timers that have not been filled as well, as well as through contingency. The enterprise funds are also seeing, the pool and tennis are seeing slight reductions in their expenses as well, due to COVID as well. And then the overtime report for the first quarter of the year. So we are seeing that the overtime, year over year, has, we're seeing an increase. If you look at the month of March, that's a significant amount, $256,000. And that includes the overtime that was incurred due to the tropical storm Isaias, got amounted to about $104,000 of overtime for that emergency. Overtime also is included there for the Seventh Street outdoor dining. And that so far is about $40,000 for the quarter. Any more questions?
Mr. Lo, so are we going to get reimbursed for the overtime as well from FEMA or Nassau County?
Yes, we are submitting those expenses for reimbursements.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to draw the highest attention to items. Three C and, I'm sorry, C3E, and we have three E's for the recreation department. As you may recall, years ago, we upgraded Field 2 to a synthetic surfin' field to major overhaul facility. The engineering company that owns the project sent us a bill about three weeks ago, a bill that was not paid for $6,250. The project has, was closed, so we have to transfer to pay this invoice. And number seven is $800 to fund the wiring in the boardroom. As you know, the boardroom was built with the Coach Hall in 1953, and the only monitoring in there is electricity. We're now wiring it for data ports for a digital phone, for network access, and power for a new digital display that should be updated by the next meeting we have in there. Those are my two items.
I would just like to make a comment to. I am on the agenda of dating to the medical services. The Human Resources Department has authored a request for proposal for the process for the engagement of medical practice to provide medical services related to the Garden City volunteer fire department and eligible employees. The RFP process began with preparation of a document that included an explanation of the objectives of the RFP, service categories, and a vendor questionnaire. The RFP document began with an overview of the village's purpose and expected results of the process, which, you know, was, "The Village of Garden City is routine bearing medical services and is in the process of conducting a evaluation of medical service providers for experiences in the field of study that focuses on identifying and controlling the risks arising from physical, chemical, and other workplace hazards with the goal of establishing and maintaining a safe and healthy working environment. The village is seeking in partnership with a medical services provider to enhance the health and safety of workers and lower overall healthcare costs." The questionnaire that was submitted, that was provided, included 34 questions related to contract requirements, the organization's background, history, and fees and expenses. The RFP was published in both of the official newspapers as well as online. When the respondents, the respondents, I prepared an analysis based on the responses that we received, and based on that analysis and review, and we recommend and request that the board approves the engagement of the medical services of Northwell Health, Occupational, Environmental, and Medicines New York on an isolated basis for an initial period of two years. Subject to the review as informed by village council and the agreement. No questions?
Thank you. Any comments? I have another comment, we're going to get a quick screening. Then, we'll turn to questions. Can you hear me?
Okay, okay, Larry.
This was, this is difficult. All right. Moving on, are there any comments or questions for trustees? All right, very good. Then, we return to citizens' comments on agenda items only. If you wish to make comments on our agenda for here, so for this evening, regarding the agenda, please indicate by raising your hand if you'd like to make a comment. Please come forward. Keep it pressed, keep it over there.
All right, the palis might have been asked, but the question I had is with respect to the, oh, I'm sorry, Matt and Howie, they've had no sense, Tom, or Rob. I just had a question with respect to the parking lot at the Nassau Boulevard station. Is the expenditure two, was that going to be reimbursed by the MTA, this Monmouth area project? I was under the impression that that's going to happen, that, my wrong? Oh, should that, should like that somehow, or has already been covered in other prior meetings? Then should be reflected in the minutes that that expense will be reimbursed, or has already been done?
We, we haven't reimbursed yet, or is someone's over in the expenditures, you'll get reimbursed?
So you have gotten payment in progress, in progress, right?
We've gotten, we've gotten approval from the MTA for expenses up to $1.6 million for renovation of the lot. The village did about $1.2 million, and we're right on budget.
Last question, is that a written agreement?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. I'd like to speak on what agenda item we're talking about. Obviously, I'm in favor of this proposal. I just want to explain that the chairman due to the COVID pandemic had no opportunity really to run these through anti-gotham, high up the board, Belmont Festival, promiscuous also, are in common revenues around 8%. And we're just looking for a little relief from the bill for that. On item 15, we would like to ask the board to extend the outside dining of the village at the end of the year, at the moment, this everyone's aware, Anvi, Seventh Street Travel, Whitney Travel, York Bros. Jewelers, New York Sports Club, Agent Moon, Perendum, HSBC, Pastry, I Fix It, and Go Greek, and then, of course, Gordon Taylor are all going to be gone from the village. I say, Seventh Street Travel, been at location for 33 years. So at the end, the foresight of what to have approved, the enhanced after the back that was first approved, has been a saving grace to the restaurants in town. So as the winter months come, and I'm sure you, you see the papers in the media, you see TV, it is a struggle for restaurants all over the state of New York, and we're no different. So I would ask that, if possible, we extend the out, like, a lot of the restaurants are looking to try and get through the rest of the year, and so I'd like to ask that that be done. Although, we will not need it on Sundays on Seventh Street, but just on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, rather than the fourth days. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question. Yeah, I have a question. Yeah, I have a question, if I could extend it to the end of the year.
Okay, here.
I have a question, if I could extend it to the end of the year. As you're aware, fire marshal, that's certain regulations, the rules, the policy, and I'm just wondering how the restaurants can apply. And my concern is that if the weather, you know, I know December can be warm, I'm going to marry in the middle of December, the temperature is almost 70 degrees. But my concern is that if we authorize this, and the weather turns really cold, and the restaurants can't put their heaters on, it can't comply with the fire marshal's request. You know, when, when does that leave us, or when does that leave the restaurants? Especially the ones, the parking lot, the Vida, the Village Place, what is it, you know, what was horrifying, spots there, et cetera. But I'm, I'm just concerned about extending this. I, I wanted, I wanted the restaurants to try to make it, not against the restaurants. I'm just concerned that if the weather turns really cold, people are not going to come out, and you're going to have to keep, you know, keep those things going for the end of the year.
There are a number of alternatives. I mean, certainly, I think the Vida, what is it, Revel, Caligeros, and Sukia, would all like to run a tent, obviously complying with Nassau Fire Regulations and Village Building Department, which would allow them to have some settlements of outdoor indoor dining. That would also allow them to have electric heaters in addition to the, the guys who throw paint heaters. heaters, they're obviously asked, they all have to be in compliance with the law, they all know that. There are some alternatives to that, there are things called deep booths, there are things called bubbles, uh, there are some new ones that just take a table of heat, and it's in its own enclosure, uh, everybody's investigating all their kinds of things. I know the heaters are becoming quite the compite, because everybody is looking at it as a restaurant, it's, you know, trying to buy it, uh, but I think, if, if we could, if we're going to help save some of these restaurants, we've got to give the, the opportunity if this real world.
Do you have any idea where they're going to store the propane?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any idea where they're going to store the propane? Any idea where they're going to store the propane?
Storage of propane has to be, again, within the regulations of the county, they either have to, uh, they have to store it, it has to be outdoors, it has to be locked, it has to be over those things, uh, and they're responsible for getting that done, and if they don't get it done, they don't get to do it.
And, and that can be less than two, that chance may be, I mean, if we want to put in there, then they have to comply with that, the fire marshal orders, fine, but I think we should give them a chance, they can operate, we should extend this, that's a big deal. Obviously, one wants it to be unsafe for greater safety, so as long as they comply with the fire marshal, of course, if you want to write in.
Peter, when we approve the agenda, these items here, extend communications in the department to the board of it, are we going to discuss them? Are we approving everything first, and then we'll discuss these items?
Right now, on agenda item number fifteen, is a request by the chamber to extend the existing outdoor dining program, or the enhanced outdoor dining program, through the end of the year. If that remains on the consent calendar, then you will have approved that for the, through December thirty-first. Your approval, however, does not alter what Mr. Donnelly just described as the individual restaurant obligation to comply with fire marshal directives, other state governor orders, or other laws and requirements. It merely indicates that you are consenting to the continuation of the program on the assumption that, subject to the condition that all of the restaurants are otherwise compliant with the law.
Yeah, I feel that's a case that, uh, I, I agree with what Trustee Bruno said, uh, we think that one of the things which is important is in order to comply with this, I think it's very important that, obviously, the fire department, everyone has to have an idea of what type of units we have, where we have, um, I think we have to have some sort of a layout to put out there. The other thing is that what you just said to me was that we basically need to, you would appreciate, of course, we'll extend the outdoor dining, what you're saying, just for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so right now, I remember that before the mayor had extended it for thirty days, but that was for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So what you're saying is we don't need to do Sunday anymore, we would just do Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Okay, all right, separate item. The other thing that you're also asking is to hold a two-day, uh, movie night, okay? And I will tell you, I personally have problems with this. The reason that I have problems with this is because what I have seen from the drawings and everything else, this is not people pulling up the cars, this is people basically pulling up the cars, and they're going to have tables, and they're going to sit dining, and everything. First of all, this takes two-thirds of the apartment, okay, I can guess that, but what I'm lying is, is that what about as far as light building insurance, what about as far as with, you know, cleanup, what about as far as with police, and those other things? So, I don't see many of that being addressed, um, as far as we're supposed to do this in the municipal law. So to me, as, as a village trustee, like I said, I, I have a mission with that, so maybe if it's possible to explain that.
Sean Martin, Sean Martin's just supposed to speak, whether he's, he's due here, uh, I would say, um, hopefully he gets here in time, I'm, I'm really not one to speak about it.
Okay, but the only thing I'll say is that, that just the, I won't, I'm not going to vote for that until I have some understanding that if we want to try to hold this event, you know, like I said, who's paying the bank, who's paying for the DPW, who's paying for the overtime, what type of liability coverage insurance that we have, this is, you know, something that, again, it sounds like a nice idea, but this is not twenty-six bars pulling up, or just going to sit front of a screen, that's not what they're laying out. So I'm just saying, I, I think that we need to have, at least for me, I don't know what I was before, but I need to have more information before I can approve something.
David, your board, uh, just to follow on what I'm pointing made on the extension of the outdoor dining program, things such as the tents would still qualify as temporary structures under our building code, and the building department would have to have learned where precisely that was going to go, and in compliance with fire marshal regulations, how the exits are set up, things of that nature, I would defer to, Josephine, but I see, yes, I'm correct. So the details of a layout on the tent, and the scope of how many people to accommodate, would all be part of the restaurant's requirement to comply with all other laws.
And, and the, the restaurants are part of it, so, thank you very much, congratulations to the trustees and the county.
You were saying, um, I have questions on this view. And to me, did we have a good year or bad year this year, I don't know?
This is a self interview.
Huh? Did we, did we have a good year or bad year, we have a lot of detail, but could you put a, a wrapper around it? Was it average, as expected, disappointing, good? And is there a way to describe the village as a whole, other than fireworks and enterprise and water and all these funds, in a way that can capture the theme? That's my question.
Are you asking for the nineteen-twenty fiscal year that just ended? Yes. So when I did the presentation, I mentioned that the village exceeded, the revenue exceeded expenditures, right? So that's a good year.
That is half the salary, or just the general fund?
That is all the funds, all the funds except for the tennis fund, however, overall, all revenues exceeded, feeling that a village-wide number, village, including all the enterprise funds, the revenues exceeded the expenditures.
So you're going, and asking to make the year number one?
Well, no, it wasn't, the expectation was that the budget would have more expenditures and more revenues, but I explained in my presentation why that didn't occur, right? We had the pandemic, we had deferred projects, so some of the things did not pan out as it was planned in the budget, but overall, you know, the, the village did well in terms of its fund balance, because the revenue exceeded the expenditures.
A lot of adjustments, and, and those directions.
You're on. Is there anyone else who has a question? Right in that event, we're going to move on, and we're going to, uh, we think the areas, uh, the local areas from August, November, twenty-twenty, have a great discussion? Trustee, the Q and A, second, Deputy Mayor, over, over as a favor. That motion passed, in that, just, second meeting, uh, one of our trustees was absent that evening, so, uh, that's the minutes of the, to prepare for the minutes of August thirteen, twenty-twenty, and have a motion to move that. Trustee, higher, and second, trustee Foley, over as a favor. And so that motion passed, seven, zero. At this time, uh, I, can I ask for a motion to remove the consent calendar?
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, take the number fourteen, consent calendar.
I thought we'd go to move the whole of the discussion, so except for item fourteen, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Trustee, the Q and A, trustee over, over as a favor.
I'd like to take thirteen off as well, please. I'd like to take thirteen off as well. Again, my concern is, it's going to be a section, and why they want to work, why they don't want to do it.
Okay, so that also, uh, number thirteen, it's going to be taken with the more discussion also, so then can I try to move that motion again? Trustee, the Q and A, trustee Foley, over, over as a favor. All right, that motion passed, in that, just, now we'll turn to.
Okay. Mayor, I'm going to have a discussion. Two items, we'll take the consent calendar.
All right. Uh, right now, we're going to have a discussion on items thirteen and fourteen, right, and a comment here.
Sure, I'll start with fourteen, I guess my, my concern with thirteen is, you know, when we do the, the dollar amounts here are not significant, my concern is we're setting the precedence here, and leaving something, what's not being residential, and having taken, a one, a one of some, or taxes involved, I've just been thinking to be careful in having a procedure, uh, with, with, uh, red days and waivers.
All right, so other trustees, some comments on this? Trustee, the Q and A?
Yeah, I think it's entirely reasonable for us to help these guys out for three months of fees, it would be like to set the dollar amounts up, you're doing it more as just a gesture of support, I really think it's, you know, a question fairly, I think. My comment is, I understand where the chair is coming from, but again, I mean, to me, I tend to agree with the other trustees, uh, this is a fee or whatever, to me, I mean, I, I think that if we end up foregoing that fee, then we would just have to pass that on to the restaurants, and, and that, I'm, 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 sorry.
I, I wouldn't for, just to clarify my comments, we have the four, thirteen, not counts. I'm sure we'll be able to see anything else.
Right now, actually, just so I can see, uh, the, the, why, I would just say, although I'd love to do that, and I'd like to help out with that, just as we, or making sense of this to help out with the restaurants, but actually, I believe that it's, it's horrible to eat in lockdown, and, and difficult to, uh, not to accept that, and then they would be able to, and sort of try out, you know, attempt to, I would say, with other things. I think, you know, I have a general purpose, and I think that they do a positive job for, for myself, I don't want to be, for them. So we're going to take a little bit, for, for, and a motion to, uh, move this, just we, uh, previous, and we have a second, first of all, and, and, over as a favor.
Mayor, Mayor from council, uh, may I respectfully request that, whether, if the motion looks like we're going to go forward to passing, that rather than it being a waiver of the fee, that the board authorizes an amendment to the licensing agreement to provide for a reduction, um, to zero for those three months, and that will authorize me to enter into a revised licensing agreement, rather than arguably a gift of all the funds.
I don't think that would ever, Dennis, how about we defer the fee for three months, and then you guys catch up, how's that? How about we give anyway, just, you guys agree with that? Just, how about we defer it for three months, and then catch up, and we give a break for three months, and then they catch up towards the end of the year? Yeah, just, just, not give it, just, you know, just, give them a break for three months.
Trustee, my understanding is that you're suggesting essentially that we accept late payments?
Yeah, if they don't.
How about if they, after three months, could they end the months together?
Sounds fine, again, it's not a risk, just give them a hand, and they'll catch up.
All right, why don't we put that to a motion, put that payment, so they get a chance to catch up, now, may I?
Is, uh, yes, sir, the motion is to authorize the village to accept late payment, specifically at the end of the license term of three months of license fee.
What, what does it mean, the ten?
I believe it has two years to run. I believe the licensing agreement has two years, boy, they're running.
So the motion then would be to authorize late payment by two years of the three months license fee, and I believe that, Dennis, you and I can work out a letter agreement to that effect.
No, boys, how, how do we do that for that, and, and somebody else knows that we don't do it for that, I just, I can't offer that.
If we want to extend?
Do you want to extend this?
Two years, we're there, we're in the term.
I want those, okay. I, I find two, you want to pose?
Trustees Delaney and Donnie, we cannot reserve, are you opposed or in favor of the motion?
Favor.
Then there are four votes in favor of the motion, and four votes opposed to the motion. I believe it's a four vote, which leaves the mayor to make the tiebreaker vote.
Yeah, I think that, that I'm going to vote to oppose it. Yeah, I think that I'm going to vote to oppose it, to break the tie.
So the record is clear, voting in favor of the motion, the trustees Foley, trustee Nudo, trustee Delaney, trustee Donnie, the remainder of the trustees opposed, and the mayor casting the tiebreaker vote. The motion fails.
So then could we, could we?
Meaning that the, the license fee must be paid on time and in form?
How do I, uh, Dennis, can you explain to me, um, what expenses the village incurred by having the outdoor meeting?
Mayor, I'm the one that asked for consent calendar. And I just would like to give an idea of somebody who is going to pay for it. Who's gonna provide insurance, who's gonna, you know, pay for it? And I don't see Sean here, is he on his way? Dennis, something?
Dennis, you have to talk to Mike.
Is he on his way?
Sean, is Sean on his way?
My thought process is that would be the whole lot of the citizens' comments, the ones to the air. So Sean gets it, so can you answer, who's gonna pay for this?
Yes, indeed, the word of business is sent by the board and can be varied, you know, as considered.
At this time, we will entertain citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Please come forward. Please give your name and address.
Uh, I'm, Honorable Mayor Truvay, and the Board of Trustees. My name is Daniel McMillan, I live at one thirty eight Meat Brook Road.
Can you please just repeat that, please, under that, so we can hear your name?
Honorable Mayor Truvay, and the Board of Trustees. My name is Daniel McMillan, and I live at one thirty eight Meat Brook Road. I would like to send you to the record that the Garden City Social Justice Anti-Racism Group sent a letter to each of the trustees and to the mayor outlining why we believe that remaining within Nassau County urban consortium is beneficial. That letter has been co-signed by ninety-one members, and I have heard more support from within the group, which currently has three hundred and thirty-two members. I am here on behalf of the Social Justice Anti-Racism Group to condemn the inaction of the trustees to remain within the consortium and your refusal to explain your decision in response to our questions. None of you could easily reply to our respectful petition from ninety-one of your constituents. For the record, the consortium performs two functions. One, it distributes federal funds onto the community development grant program to participate in the members and nonprofits. And two, it maximizes the amount of federal funds available to Nassau County by increasing the number of its member communities. Garden City's membership of the consortium benefits Garden City by helping provide access to the grant funding if it is ever needed and by helping to promote community development throughout Nassau County, all with no cost to Garden City. Moreover, we intend with the Board of Trustees' action to keep the consortium at the first late and irreversible opportunity to reflect and strengthen the stereotype that Garden City does not care about meaningful integration or homelessness in, in Nassau County. Make no mistake, systemic racism is also a risk to public health. COVID- nineteen has disproportionately decimated our neighbors with Hampstead, Elamond, Freeport, and Roseburg. For example, the village of Hampstead has three point five times the number of cases from one thousand residents as Garden City. Even if all parties involved are not personally negative, Garden City's poor history of institutional discrimination, including the unsuccessful application of affordable housing at the Double Day Center, the failed attempt at affordable housing at the Green Road Center, the attorney general investigation into discrimination regarding its parks, which resulted in the need to adapt to anti-discrimination policy and the failed attempt to develop affordable housing at the Social Services Center that cost the village millions of dollars. Indeed, we are asking the village to be anti-racist, which means proactively working towards integration and not reactively settling lawsuits. I am disappointed, but not at all surprised, by the board's unanimous decision to leave the consortium. That is not the village or three hundred and thirty-two members desired. I wish to see the village's commitment to its fair housing law carried out to the fullest extent of its power, and here in this decision, I already see a fail. Honorable Mayor Truvay, I do not believe you are racist. And to the trustees, I do not believe any of you are racists. Yet this action of leaving the consortium bears what Judge Slade deemed to be race-based injustice. Someone can take racism action without being personally negative themselves. I give the Board of Trustees that benefit of the doubt. Intentional or not, this decision follows in segregationist footsteps of Robert Moses, A.T. Stewart, and William Leonard. I ask that the Board place a vote to re-enter the consortium at its first available opportunity on an agenda for a future Board of Trustees meeting. Is this something that the Board will do? As many, you, you, you know, those thoughts?
Excuse me?
I can re-ask that. As many, including myself, have said before and since the extrajudicial execution of George Floyd, silence is violence.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to move to the microphone?
I would just ask a question with Brother Harry from, uh, Tides of the Year, uh, showtime for me. Thank you.
Exactly.
Very good.
Can you answer any questions then about those that was in the paper?
I can answer some, uh.
Is there anyone else who would like to move to the microphone?
So really, really, I'll give a little challenge, looking at you. Um, can you not hear me? Is this okay? Can you hear me? Um, I wonder if the Board would respond to Reven, who's asking for a meeting and hasn't received a response from any of him. I would hope that concerns is, or that's formed from an issue that's affecting the village, but at least get your time at a meeting.
Sir, would you be happy to just make your name for the record, please, sir?
Tom Della, Detective Kilburn.
Foley can tell you this, that I received a copy of it, uh, the Reven request. I'll just speak for myself. As soon as I saw it, I said, absolutely, it was a great idea. So let's have a public meeting, let's invite politicians. All the people who were able to come to all the different events outside, let's invite them all, and let's have a public meeting. So that was the way I responded, I know that other trustees responded as well. But as far as why eleven developed it, I don't know. Responded to, I mean, Rich Curry always said that the poll and email certainly wasn't responsible. With a very specific request to schedule a meeting.
Yeah, I was wrong.
Can I, can you respond to this email? What do we need to do? What's the, what's the next thing?
Sure, I, I think that, um, the clarification we are looking for too is, is Reven just wants to be with us or also with, like, Plaid and, and Rob, or just us?
I mean, it's their choice. And they really get available to it.
I think, for me, again, speaking, um, um, you know, I think Reven knows I support their cause and their sense, but just talking to each other is not gonna get it all. I think we need to give them a participation in the public meeting. I was, um, definitely in favor of the Congress, we should have given right attendings here. And, uh, that's gonna be the truth.
Yeah, I, I, I personally, I absolutely. Listen, I think that it makes sense, though, if we're gonna have this meeting, let's have a public meeting, everything centered public, that's way chipping. But let's make sure that we invite Mr. Plaidens, all the politicians, and the students from the microphone. Okay, and you say all the things that they did, and why don't they sit down with us as a board and the community, and then we could all sit down and have a discussion? Absolutely, a hundred percent fair, that's my opinion. I don't think that any of us are against it, um, but, yeah, I don't know, what's the, how do we, things happen? How do we, like, actually have a date and a time and a, the ten leaders? And what do you want us to do, maybe ask to invite?
Did, did you guys, did, like, uh, Plaid and those guys, Thomas also get an invite for the meeting from you guys? Who invited them? It was, it was, it was one, I remember that.
It was a little long.
Yeah, it was a little long. Exactly.
That's, that's all, sir.
Yeah, yeah, I'm saying, we, we, I was so handy, I was a downer, but, uh, I think we just, we need to invite them enough to match.
Absolutely. And I'm hesitant to comment on their relationship with you all between each other, from my perspective.
Yeah, but I'm certainly getting to be with us separately. I don't think it makes sense, potentially, so. What I mean to say is, if Reven and the trustees talking to each other, I think, like, this is what's going on. I think if there's at least, uh, you know, some of us who are very interested, but the ability of us to actually make something happen, we need, so any other, we need, we need some firepower, we love to have it in public, so let's, you know, be there. We can be there, we didn't, we didn't, please give plenty of stuff.
I mean, even if they're, um, if they're right or not.
Right, but I guess, just talking to each other.
See, one of the problems that is, that we don't seem to make sense is that we cannot get the little people to come and sit down with us and talk about it. They should have done it before they did. And it would be in this body, but it is very difficult to figure out the attitude of it. Because when you invite them, it goes nothing.
I know, and, and also, I think, I think, some of those things, I think there's other things that I don't understand. But that's, listen, all, all I'm saying is, if you, if you guys want to sit down and want to meet with the board, like I said, just speaking for myself, I'm a hundred percent favor of it, okay? But, but I'm just saying, you know, if you guys had the first meeting, okay? We didn't even know about it, I mean, help our village. I didn't know about it until I received the email, uh, literally the day before, and myself, you know, many of the trustees didn't actually work, so we're, we're, we're a top, so we can't do this at ten thirty in the morning. Okay, and I could not wait for the second one because I had a family phone call that I had. But all I'm saying is that, you know, instead of, you know, politicians standing up there with microphones and, you know, getting everyone around, or clapping, I have an idea, why don't we sit down and they can share with us their thoughts and their ideas? Because they had many, many things to say. And as a board member, I sat there and said, like I said, you guys come in that room, we'll sit there too, we can sit here, we can sit in front, or whatever. Have them come, have the politicians who'll sit down for this, we'll all sit down together to talk about it. I'm a hundred percent favor.
I mean, have you all made the request to politicians to submit the request to the empty areas and down this field there? You are folks, is it all us?
In four minutes' time, it has been exceeded.
I don't think, I don't think it's the wrong way either, I don't think, like, blaming Reven for not getting there. I think we're, we're saying, Rob, getting, this is tough. We're not supposed to meet, I mean, if you like, to just be close.
Why don't we just, I also, I also mean this to make you frustrated. But like I said, to me, I, I, you know, I, I, like I said, let, let's, you know, turn around, give us an idea, if you guys wanna get together, and let's extend it out to the politicians, and let's do it. I mean, I'll, I'll go for it, I don't know why it hasn't proceeded forward, I don't, because I responded right away.
Just give, let's get a couple of dates and try and work it out. I, I would be happy to be with the guys. I talked to Rich before, I went to your, one of your rallies. I would go to a meeting in a rally.
Let's try again, see if we can make it work. Is there anyone else who would like to move to the microphone? Yes?
Steve Alordi, Meadow Street. I, I think the village needs to rethink when they do the sidewalks and the roots they cut from the trees. And maybe the trees should be taken down rather than cutting all the roots. If you look at the trees, some of the trees that came down from this last storm, and not by any means all of them, but on Pine Street, the sidewalks and streets were just, uh, trees fell and sidewalks weren't damaged at all because all the roots had been removed. And, uh, on the corner of Washington and Chestnut, because they repaved the Chestnut, most all the trees fell to the block. This one fell right across Washington because they had done the sidewalks on Washington. It was a corner house with Chestnut, and there were no roots there. They removed all the roots, they do the sidewalks and herbs, and there's nothing holding the tree in the ground. So I had the same thing at my house, they took all the roots out. And when Irene came through, six, six years ago or so, we had to have the tree taken down because it was just teetering, the pumpkin was holding it on one side. That's all, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Ryan Werney, three seven, Hampton Road. I just thought, I don't know, the discussions about, but the village dump and the issuance of the stickers for the dump. Uh, when you discuss that, if you could consider allowing residents with non-commercial plates or trucks, be able to use their pickup trucks at the dump. We were attached to pairs, residents, the fact that the driver's pickup truck can't use it, seems a bit absurd. I understand, you don't want commercial, when people dump it, and stuff will dump, but the non-commercial plates or, you know, nothing on the side of the vehicles, they have their business. It would seem kind of nice to be able to use a truck for the dump.
I do.
Anyone else? Okay, is it?
Mayor, like, uh, request that we move into executive session for personal matters, please.
Before we go to executive session, let me pop out the two items. Yes.
Do I understand, by the way, Mayor, that the board has unanimous consented to remove from the agenda uh, the item of fourteen, the suggestion of the chairman, is that correct? And then there are the two remaining discussion items before the board may wish to go into executive session. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's, as I indicated before you go into executive session, you may wish to have those two discussions.
Alright, the first discussion is the evolution, consideration changing, passing, the issuance, stickers. So, comments on this?
Yeah. It's worked. The Nassau. Um, yeah, the two items now, we want the first, what, the dump, five thirty. I agree with the resident's vote, I think we should, I don't know why we have, I do know why we have this limitation on the way we give stickers out, I think we should re-up the whole system. So, we can do this another time, I think we should, you know, by DPW and CARA now, we can put our heads together, come up with a program that works better, really, I don't know. Uh, I think more importantly, though, is the second item. Uh, I think more important though is the second item, where I think we do need to formally request funds. The town of Hempstead was lucky enough to be allocated federal funds. As far as I know, those funds, if they're not spent, expire by the end of the year. I think we have two or three projects that fit within the frameworks of what those funds are dedicated for. The HVAC systems that the library, the senior center, and also the village, actually. And I think we should formally request when, maybe we get lucky and we get some, or we can all vote request. But I would suggest we do that, do that quickly in September. Like you said, I believe the funds expire at the end of the year. HVAC systems can be, be better because of that against COVID and other COVID problems. And I think we should try to get some of these funds for those resists that we are going to be giving very soon. So I would suggest that we make a formal request. I don't know what the number is, throw out two and a half million dollars. And let's see where that ends up. To me, there's no harm asking.
So what process do you have to deal with? I need to find out what process for a while. I think, I think we all like free money, so I don't know that we're going to get a lot of position on this one. Really? Can I ask too about the dump? So basically, the idea of having stickers or having some way of identifying someone, a resident to, to the right spot before a resident of the non-commercial people could be easily kind of spotted as opposed to someone who's there illegally. I mean, isn't that cool?
Yeah, we all have a really good system on identifying vehicles, stickers given to somebody else. I mean, we should just make it good for three years, pick the color. First be the purple, the second be the, like the three years be numbered. And it hasn't been changed in how long? Thirty years? More. So we have no way of, I don't know about you guys, but I've got the dump. You know there's people commercial for using it and people who don't even have stickers. At least we have a bill, it's not a bill, but it's a little better system to track it. It's not about the money. It's fifteen bucks. Not proposed to change that. I just think we need a system where we can track things and we can track who's dumped it and what vehicle it's attached to.
So the fee is not, you can also look at the free money sticker. Right, so the fee is there. The fee is not like the back breaking fee, you know, for dumps. It's the daily sticker.
Yeah, and I was just thinking for three years. Because if people leasing a car don't lease it for three years, you know? I don't, it's not the money, not going to change, it's fifteen bucks. Doesn't have to be. It's more of a tracking.
And also maybe look at the, at the trucks. Contract they're signing. I don't see why they wouldn't be able to do that as well.
You know, if we, if this law would be canceled, you know, we could just, yeah.
My understanding is Joe will develop a somewhat of a plan and bring it back to the board for its approval with respect to the grant award application. I further understand that they'll investigate what funding opportunities are available. But as and when there is an actual grant award agreement, then the agreement would need to be authorized by the board, right?
It's like, let's figure out if we can claim some free money. Yes.
Wouldn't that request come from Ralph? Joe, you can get the price. I think it'd come from Ralph, but it should come from our village administration.
Typically, other than the village administrator or the mayor, it's the red cabinet.
I just had a few questions. Joe, how much they charge us to take away the garbage that goes in the dump? Is it something like seven, seven dollars a ton? So again, it's not, it's not the fifteen dollars, but if we have commercial vehicles dumping the garbage there, then we're paying too hard away the garbage.